We got it figured out. Just wait. Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. This is Thursday, April 6th. And our first item on the agenda is Bob Messer is going to speak to us about a grant the First Baptist Church is applying for.
Thank you, sir. Um, thank you for inviting me, I think. Um, yeah, so the Baptist Church, I don't know how many people are aware of it, but in '26, there'll be our 200th anniversary. And in preparing for that, we have quite a few things going on. At some point, we will have a committee appointed. And, you know, so a question may be if there's someone from the town that wants to be on that committee, that would be great. Again, we'll have a lot of things going on, we hope. But in preparation for that, we're going to start doing some work on our, on our building. And the first item is our windows. In the meeting house, they, they were replaced in 1958, and they need some, we either need to repair, replace, combination of things. So that's what brought us to the L-Chip process, and we're filling out the application at this point in time. There's some questions on there. We could use a little bit of help maybe from the town. One of the questions was, does the town or the municipality, um, do they agree with this, with the projects? This project and other projects, um, you know, the, the meeting house has been kind of a center of, of the town off and on over the 200 years. It's not just the church, but the building itself, um, has been, again, um, has been kind of center, centerpiece. Your, your clock is a fine example of that, and we'll kind of get to that at the end. So we're looking for maybe, again, a letter or something that we can present to the L-Chip folks that you guys would support, you know, the window restoration in the church. That would be great. It would be a big help. One of the things that comes up a little bit and are one of the questions, and we applied for this grant back in 2018, or a similar grant, and we got turned down. There's several reasons for it. We didn't do as much due diligence as we should have, so that was on us. And they didn't have the, the funds when it came down to the, to the end. So, um, the question that is asked is if, if the stewarding organizations dissolved for some reason, um, if we left the building and 30 years from now, congregation went down the road and put a new building up or something like that, um, you know, that could be, for the L-Chip folks, what they care about is the building. They care about, you know, putting this money out and making sure the building's going to be maintained for, for years to come, which is rightfully so. And again, we're not looking for, and, and things change. We understand that. And again, 30, 40, 50 years from now, um, we can't, you can't predict that. Again, so basically what we would like is some sort of a, a letter saying that you guys support what we're doing over there. You support the, not necessarily the church, but the, the building itself. And that would be great. And then, again, as we reach out to Vermont, New Hampshire, ABC Churches, Church, um, we talked to them some about the same thing, this stewarding, um, process. So it's, it's a, it's a question of whether, I had a great conversation with Janet, and one of the things she said was if, if we reached that point, that maybe might go on to the town warrant and let people vote whether they wanted to continue the maintaining the church again, if for some reason we dissolve. But I, we don't see that happening. We've been here 200 years, so, or almost. So hopefully, we continue on for, well, another 200 years. I won't, but, you know, the organization might. So that's kind of where we're at. One of the things was, so the, the clock, we, we have the Robert Morgan Company coming in to do some work on our tower and, um, and also on the clock. I, I think when it gets done, everybody's going to be happy. It's getting him here. He has, um, he has a lot of work ahead of him. It looks like midsummer, if that answers. I know he had some questions about that. So the tower, the internal structure, the shutters up on top will be redone. We have some rot, not structurally, but there's a lot of pine boards up there, have some rot. We're going to replace those, repaint it. So, and your clock, I think you're going to do, you'll do a really nice job with that. It's going to look really good. So again, preparation for, you know, our 200th anniversary, we're going to be working on that. We'll be, we'll probably be driving some sort of capital campaign. What that looks like, I don't know, but, so that's kind of where we're at. Any questions?
Okay. Bill?
Well, Bob, I think that the town has a significant history of making sure that its, its legacy buildings are, are kept and used somehow or other. And we're sitting in, in one of them here. The Tracy Library has gone from being a hospital to being a, a library, the town office.
My dad was born down there.
Okay. A few, a few of them left still. The, you know, the Colby Building where the town offices are is another example of, of that. And so it seems to me that somehow the town, generally, and Janet's suggestion of maybe making this an issue that lets the whole town, you know, have a, have a say in it, makes a lot of sense, but the town doesn't throw away its old buildings. Let's just, I think that, so I think you're on pretty firm ground asking about that. And I think in terms of being a resource for the town beyond your, your pastoral activities, you've got the, the food bank over there, you've, that Cleveland Hall is used regularly for all sorts of activities around the town. You've housed the clock for the town for many, many years. So I, I think there's a, going to be a lot of enthusiasm for, however, however we go forward. So, you know, I for one will be right there, being supportive of what you want to do.
Okay. Super, Bill. Thank you very much.
BB?
I think I just want to be clear on exactly what you need to, need to be in that letter.
Yeah, no, so, yeah, we're just looking for, one of their questions is, you know, does the, um, does the town support the, the building, the structure, and what we're going to be doing to it is really all we, we need. It's, you know, as we go through this application, it's, well, you guys probably know, but it's quite a little bit to it. So trying to give us, we're trying to give ourselves the best chance. I mean, we, we kind of messed up the last time we did this, so we're trying to not do that twice. But I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, I think so. And I, I agree with Bill. I mean, I think that building has a lot of significance in this town. Has, do we know if any other church in town has ever asked us to do the same kind of a thing?
I don't think so. Not in my memory, no.
Okay.
I think, BB, that the rest of the religious facilities in town are, by, by standard of 100 years, are pretty new.
True. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone in the public have any questions for Bob? No? Okay. Well, um, we probably need a motion for this. I recommend that the select board agree to send a letter of support for the grant for L-Chip, for the First Baptist Church, indicating that in the event there was no longer a church there, that voters of New London would have an opportunity to vote on it at town meeting.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Bob.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. You guys are the best.
All right. All right, yeah.
Hey, Bob, you're easy. You want to come back and tell us that a couple, two more times?
Okay. Are there any comments, any public comments about anything that is not on our agenda?
Why, free to go.
Yep, you can go.
Never done this before. Last time I was in here, I think 1976, when I voted.
Oh, wow. Gosh. Well, we need you to vote more often.
I voted a hundred times. I won't be voted twice.
Oh, all right. Okay. If there are no public comments, then I would like to call on Chief Cobb. She is here to discuss a grant application for the Police Department.
Hopefully, I won't need all of the things in these here folders, but all of the answers should be contained in there. So in the spring of 2022, I had learned of a grant funding opportunity that was expressed to us through Senator Gene Shaheen's office for congressionally-directed spending funds. I subsequently applied for that grant in the amount of $413,000 for a new CAD, Computer Aided Dispatch, and RMS, Records Management System, for our dispatch center for the New London Police Department. And it would impact the other agencies that we dispatch for as well, and the police, the fire EMS, and it's a much more efficient, it's a much more up-to-date software than what we have now. So we were granted that money, $413,000. So I'm very happy to report that, and I am ready to hit send on the application. I've been working with Janet a little bit, and as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, she and I are the authorized people to sign off on this application, which is, it was intense, to say the least, to fill out anything, certainly with grant applications typically is. But I learned quickly that for the federal government, it's even more intense. So I'm ready to hit send. I just wanted to give the board an update on where that grant stood. I don't know how soon after I submit the application that the funding might be released, but I have been in talks with the company that we've selected to provide the software. So as soon as we know a little bit more about when the money might be available, then we could take next steps to implement it.
Okay. Bill, do you have any questions?
So Chief, you said at the beginning, we've been granted this money by Senator Shaheen's office, is that, or it's been directed to you, is that?
Yes.
So now you just have to do the paperwork. It's not a question about whether you're going to get it, is it?
That's correct. Yep, yep, it's, it's called-
Jumping through, jumping through the hoops now.
Sure. Yep. It's called an application, but it's not a competitive application, if you will. This money has already been earmarked for the town of New London. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was confused there, too.
It pays for the, the, the base purchasing price, so essentially the license itself, and then the first year of service. And by applying for this much money in this amount with this structure, we're able to, it's a lesser rate in the years going forward, that not only the town of New London would have to pay for this software, but also the communities that surround us. So we're very excited about this program. We've had the same records management system software for over 20 years, and it just doesn't, we're excited for a new software system.
BB, do you have any?
Nope.
Anything further? Are there any questions from anyone here? We need a motion. I move we approve the COPS grant application for the New London Police Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is to make appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. And I'm going to recognize Kim.
Okay. I did contact all of the chairs of the various boards and committees and commissions to ask them to reach out to their members whose term expire in 2023. And with a couple of exceptions, I heard back from everybody. So I will just read, begin by starting with the first board and commission and let you know whether or not the person wants to be reappointed or not. And the board can then can either reappoint the person as they have asked, or if you have another person that you'd like to appoint, now would be the time. Okay? So boards, the Board of Fire Awards, we have Pete Lordson. He is willing to be reappointed if you so desire.
Yep. Is that, okay.
Conservation Commission, we have Michael Kennedy and Mark Vernon, who would both like to be reappointed. And we have a vacant seat, Ruth White's seat, and the Conservation Commission Chair, Bob Brown, recommends that you elevate Sue Andrews, who's currently an alternate, to fill that vacant seat.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Housing Commission, Peter Nichols, Amy Kaplan, and Steve Thro, all agree to be reappointed.
Okay.
Recreation Committee, Kim Ilg, Chris Lorio, and Tara Stone, all request reappointment.
Okay.
The Zoning Board of Adjustment, Michael Todd, Catherine Fisher, and Lauren Snow Chadwick request reappointment. And we have two interested people that you might want to consider for appointment as alternates. That would be Peter Thoreau and Conrad Bolton.
Okay. Is that good with everybody? Okay.
We have the Tri-Town Assessing Board. Janet Kidder is the selectman's representative. We have a citizens slot that's open. We have two interested citizens, Emily Campbell and Nancy Rollins. Both have served on the committee in the past. So you need to choose one.
Okay. Bill?
So I would suggest that, in this case, that Emily Campbell would look more like a citizen than, than Nancy, since she's just left this board. So I would recommend that we appoint Emily at this point.
Okay. BB, is that good with you?
Yeah, I don't really have an opinion. They're both, both good.
This is more of an information gathering type of committee, I would say.
Yep.
You know, to find out what's going on in Sunapee and Newbury with the assessing situation. So that sounds good.
Okay, the Planning Board, want to hold off on that?
Do we have to take a vote on that one?
You haven't been voting. You've just been saying.
Okay.
Okay. You can if you want, though, but, okay. Planning Board, we're going to hold off on, because I have to hear back from that chair.
Yeah.
Same with Archives. Jim Perkins will speak with his members to double check, to make sure they want reappointment. Citizens Committee, of the people who are up for, their terms are up, the only one I've heard a no from is Phyllis Pietro. She knows that it's a public board, so she can visit anytime she wants, but she thinks it's time for her to get off. So we have John Clough, Janet Miller Haynes, Tina Helm, Paul Lenahan, and Arden Tingley. And we have four interested citizens that I would recommend you appoint, Mark Vernon, Lou Boda, Gene Weber, and Nancy Rollins. This brings us under the 28 members that I think is the highest we've ever had. So this would bring us, I think, to 24.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All good?
Finally, we have the Energy Committee. We have Jamie Hess, Vigo Fish, and Lisa Hess, who have all requested consideration for reappointment.
That's good. You're good?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay, so I will come back to you with Planning Board and Archives, want to hear from them.
All right, great. Thanks, Kim. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the request for seasonal parking at Elkins and Buckland Beach. And I don't know whether the chief wants to speak to this, or Bob Harrington, or Kim you?
Or Jamie Hess might want to speak. He's the one who brought it to the board's attention.
Okay. Jamie, do you want to come up to the podium and talk about this then, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to go first. And, yes, so, um-
Oh, thanks, Will. Didn't know about the secret button. So I actually was not aware until a few months ago that our beach parking by permit ordinance was in effect year-round. The town that I grew up in, which has beaches, has a seasonal parking restriction where only town residents are allowed to park at the beach from Memorial Day until mid-September. And I thought most, if not all, towns operated that way, so it came as a shock to me when I invited some out-of-town friends to join me at Buckland Beach during Christmas week. We got a visit from a police officer who said that that was not permitted. So I guess my question to the selectmen is, I know that, I've read the beach ordinance, and I know that it doesn't have any, it doesn't have a, it's in effect year-round. So I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen if we could consider having the ordinance apply only during the warm weather months, when there is high demand for beach parking. And at other times of the year, it seems like it would be an unnecessary burden on the Police Department to enforce the ordinance when it's really not necessary, because there's really no demand for beach parking, except in the warm weather. And then that would allow residents like myself to invite out-of-town friends to join me at Buckland or Elkins in the off-season, when the parking lot's pretty much deserted.
All right. BB, do you have any thoughts on this one?
I think it makes sense. Maybe I would just ask Chief Cobb if she has any comments, if there's any issues outside of the summer months, but other than that, I think it makes sense. That's, that's usually the time when the beaches are the most crowded, or in the warmer months.
The only thing, I guess, I would want to make clear is what those parameters are. So if folks did come into the town in the winter months, they didn't then also think that, that free parking, so to speak, applied in the summer months? So it might require a change of signage there. I guess I could talk to Bob Harrington about that, but just to make it very clear, instead of, you know, no parking, or, or, what does it say? Permit parking only. Maybe it turns into seasonal permit parking only. So, you know, we're happy to enforce the laws and ordinances of the state and of the town, but we just want to make sure that it's clear to not only the people that are abiding by them, but also the police officers that are expected to enforce them, so.
Okay. Bill?
I agree with both Jamie's request and Emily's, you know, desire to make sure the signage is correct, but I can't imagine why we wouldn't allow Jamie and his house guests to go, go walk around the beach in October, so.
Okay. Chief Lyon?
Selectmen, Helma, I totally concur if they were walking around the beach in the wintertime, but truth be told, the issue is individuals skating on Pleasant Lake. If, I, I have no issues on Little Sunapee. However, is this opening the town up for any liability when individuals are skating on ice that by, all recommendations by the New Hampshire Fishing Game is not safe? This year, we had conditions where individuals fell through. Fortunately, Jamie was able to pull one of his guests out of the water. This all started four years ago, when a email went out saying that the ice was safe, come skating on Pleasant Lake, and a gentleman and his dog fell through. I'm not necessarily excited to be concerned about individuals that are putting themselves, and certainly, I, I would say that Jamie is an expert. He has the proper equipment. Some people even wear full dry suits when they're skating, which, which indicates if you're wearing a dry suit, that you're being prepared to fall through the ice. New Hampshire Fishing Game says four inches of ice. This year, we went down and checked the ice, and there was two inches that the individuals were skating over. And there were open areas that people were going right up with their Nordic ski poles. Is that correct, Jamie? Is that what you refer to?
Um, they're, they're actually ice testing poles that are used to determine if the ice is safe.
Right.
We could, we could go on for hours about this type of-
Okay.
I just want to mention that I've never had a pole on my guests out of the water.
So, so one of the, one of your colleagues indicated that this year, that an individual is rescued from Pleasant Lake by your group, so.
No, no, it must have been a different lake that we're talking about.
I'm pretty sure it was Pleasant, but regardless, I, I'm concerned that they're skating over ice that clearly isn't safe, and the next day, the ice is open. So I understand that they have the proper equipment in order to test the ice. They have spikes to pull themselves out. They've got PFDs that they can pull the, but that's not the case with everyone. Are we, as a town, saying that we're advocating for people to park at Buckland or Elkins and go out on ice, that as the, the fire chief, and there's nothing I can do about it, you know, as soon as the, the snow's off the ground, you know, poor Peter Hoagland has to get a burn permit that's required by state law. Fishing Game, the governor, is as frustrated as anyone. No legislation's been passed with regards to ice thickness, and the problem is Pleasant Lake, Big Lake, Sunapee are the most dangerous lakes in our area. Messer Pond, Otter Pond, Little Sunapee tend to be the safest. They're shallow. They don't, they're not affected by the winds that come over the, the hills of Pleasant Lake. This year, Pleasant Lake didn't catch until the beginning of March, when we had that, that cold snap. So I am concerned that if the town does go in this path, are we opening ourselves up to any sort of liability? And, and certainly, maybe it's just worth a, a talk with town council. I'm not sure if, if Kim's reached out or not, but it's been something that's been weighing on my mind for the last four years. I can't do anything about it. It is what it is. But are we advocating for doing things that aren't safe? Happy to answer any questions before I sit down.
Jay, I, I would make a distinction between parking and skating. And so it seems to me that both need signage, whether we change the beach ordinance, parking ordinance at this point. If there's not signage that protects us in terms of people going out on the lake to skate, then shame on us for not having signage already.
Yeah, and, and, but I, I think that Jamie's request is specifically for his skating group that comes over. That, that's the catalyst of it. Plenty of people walk around Pleasant Lake, and there's adequate parking near the dam. The, uh, not the Odd Fellows, the, what's the other group next to Dan Snyder's?
Masons.
Masons, thank you, thank you. Next to the Mason Lodge, there's the, the parking in front of our old dam, or the mill pond. So there is some parking down there. This is just advantageous for this particular group to go and skate from the post office.
Then we ought to-
It's, it's up to you as the select board, but I just think that you need to be educated, or at least have the knowledge that this is an issue, and someone, people go through, the gentleman that I talked to that was part of Jamie's group, has pulled out two people this year, part of the group when, after they went through, we tested the ice, and they're not following what the state of New Hampshire Fishing Game is recommending.
So irrespective of the agenda item here, I'm very concerned that we don't have posting for skating on the lakes.
And what Fishing Game is-
It's just like no hunting.
Yeah, yeah. And what Fishing Game has said is, unfortunately, for like the New London Fire Department to go and test ice, ice conditions fluctuate based upon time of year. They fluctuate depending on weather conditions. It's really advantageous for each individual that's either a- for each individual that's either an angler, or an ice boater, a skater, whatever the case is, to go and annual or daily check the ice. Obviously, it's easier for an angler because they have the tools when they're cutting a hole in the lake, which ironically doesn't happen on Pleasant Lake because ice fishing isn't allowed, but neither here or there. So, it's difficult, I think, for the town to say, conditions are safe, conditions aren't safe. However, there could be a sign saying that caution, unsafe ice, skate at your own risk, no different than when the lifeguards leave in between nine and five o'clock, there's no lifeguard. With that being said, I also don't know of any drownings that have happened or any people that needed to be rescued on those off-hours. But I just want to inform the select board because I know that Kim and I have had multiple conversations. I've had conversations with the Board of Firewards. This is an ongoing concern for me. I'm not, as a winter enthusiast, I love all these sports. However, as the person that is going to be putting my life, other people's, the rescuer's lives in danger to go out, it's something from a preventative, from a risk management aspect that we look at and we say, does this make sense?
Kim, do you have any thoughts on this?
I think if you're going to have a, consider this, you need to have a public hearing, and you might want to wait until like September, because this wouldn't go into effect until October, November.
All right.
I think so long as we don't have signs that say parking for skaters, I mean, I definitely think we're not encouraging people. They could be hiking, they could be, you know, October, November, December. Certainly, we're not encouraging anybody to do risky activities, whether they're hiking in areas where they could get hurt. So, I do agree that it's a different situation, parking and skating. If you, but if we are going to consider it, you need to have a public hearing, and I would suggest it be sometime in September.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I agree with Kim.
Okay.
I agree too.
Does anyone in the public want to make a comment? No? Okay.
I'd just like to say one more quick.
Go ahead.
Which is, as.
There, I pushed the button. As everybody now knows, I do spend a lot of time skating on lakes, and I lead tours where we observe very strict safety requirements. But I have to say that during my time on frozen lakes, I've seen people out cross-country skiing, snow shoeing, ice fishing, even just walking, and very few of them are taking the proper safety precautions. So, it's true that parking doesn't mean skating. It could mean skiing, snow shoeing, walking, ice fishing, not on Pleasant Lake, but anywhere else, and any number of recreational activities that people might choose to do on a frozen lake, or even just walking around the lake at a time when it's not frozen. So, I respect Chief Lyon's comments, some of which I agree with, and I'd love to discuss it at length with anybody here who's interested, but I don't want to take up any more of your time. So, thank you so much.
All right.
Okay. I have to use the microphone so everyone can hear us tomorrow when they watch it, right?
Right.
As the entity tasked with enforcing these parking ordinances, I'm happy to work with Kim to draft a couple of options, so to speak, for the board, and just to try to update it and hopefully remove any sort of ambiguity in the language in the parking ordinance.
Okay. All right, so we'll continue this in, this discussion in September, if everybody's okay with that. All right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is discuss the priorities of the board, and Bill, I'll start with you.
So, you know, I think this is important, really important subject, and for me, to think about priorities, I begin by thinking about what guidance do we have, and I have here in front of me still the master plan that was developed two years ago, and I think it is very clear that there are several things that we need to work on and be, continue to work on. One is the police situation, and I think that was, will continue to be my number-one priority. It's been going on for any number of years. There's plenty of evidence that the town thinks that we should have a different police situation than we currently have. The engineers that we hired five years ago said that very, very strongly, so I cannot imagine that a continuing discussion of the police facility situation will not turn out, will not, should not be the number-one, should be the number-one priority, and you know, maybe it should be an agenda item every time we meet so that we show that that's important to us. You know, one place we might start is to deal with the question of what's it going to cost, because, you know, I think there's a lot of poor information out there about what the cost to the taxpayers will be. It's easy to talk about $10 million. It's a little bit easier to talk about $250 a year, I think. So, I think we could work on that part of it very quickly, but I don't think we should have a meeting when we don't talk about it because it is the number-one priority that comes out of the master plan. It's the number-one priority that comes out of the Herriman Report, and it just, it's not going to go away. We've got, we're doing a disservice to our Police Department by not dealing with it regularly. Beyond that, it seems to me there's three or four things that have been sitting around for a while that we need to get on with. The wage study, I think we should ask Kim tonight to get proposals for consultants and get on with that project. I think it's time to do a review of the, how we calculate dispatch fees, not for going back and recalculating them and reworking all of the work that's been done over the years about other alternatives and so on, but simply to confirm how we go about doing it and why we do it the way we do it, and we need to do that sooner rather than later because of other towns' budgets. I think if we could find a way, perhaps working with the SAU to work on the asset management for the town facilities, that would be an excellent short-term thing that we could get some real mileage from. So, that's where I would start. There's a whole lot of other things. I think there's some things we have to do, we've committed to doing with the Budget Committee that we can perhaps work on as the summer goes on. But short-term, wage study, dispatch fees, town facility, asset management, and police, police, and more police.
Okay. All right, thank you. Bebe?
Sure. I agree with Bill on the Police Department. I also think we need to continue that conversation, and it's a very important project. I like the idea of having it as an agenda item regularly on every agenda, so it's in front of us all the time. I think we should do that for whatever we kind of all agree with for all the priorities that we talk about tonight. Wage study, of course, I think Kim is looking for us to give her the go-ahead on that so she could get that rolling. The town building, the inventory and the capital improvement plan, I think, are kind of tied together. I had a good conversation with Brett Pear, the new facilities director at the SAU. He gave me some good guidance and advice, described to me what a computerized maintenance management system is that Phil referred to a few meetings ago, and I kind of have my brain wrapped around that now and understand it. They're currently using an Excel spreadsheet, and he sent me what they're using, like a template, so, and he said it's been very helpful to him. Anyway, I think that that is a priority for sure. And also, he talked about a ticketing system that they're using now. It's a module of the computerized maintenance management system that each site leader has access to, so they can just put in a ticket, instead of picking up the phone and calling Kim and saying, "We have a leak." So, those little things that I think we could do pretty easily. I'd also like to review the capital reserve accounts. I think that's a low-hanging fruit that probably could be done pretty quickly as we, ahead of the budget season. I think that's it. The social media presence, I think, was on that list of things to consider. I think that could be easily, I have some information on the resources that we used to use at the school district that I'll share with Kim so that that can be discussed. And, let's see. I think that's, I have some things for looking out forward, but for right now, I think those are mine, yes.
All right. I agree with both of you. I think number one is the police station. I do think we should look at dispatch fees, and I think we should also have a meeting with the New London Springfield Water Precinct Commissioners and talk about what's going on with the water in this town, even though we can't influence them one way or another. I think we need to know where we're headed with water and the availability of it. And I think we should ask Kim, maybe, do you, we would all agree to send out an RFP for the wage and compensation study. Go ahead and do that. Do we all, we all agree with that? Okay, so those were my, my main points.
I would just go back. I mentioned the master plan, and mobility and sidewalks are a huge issue in that also, and it's not to diminish the importance of that, but I think until we sit down with the water precinct and understand their plans for tearing up from Holman's Corner to Squire's Lane, that we can't really make our plans for the sidewalks.
Right. And when people ask me about sidewalks, I always say, you know, until we know what's going to happen with the water lines, we really don't want to tear up the sidewalks and put in new ones until that, that has been accomplished. So, I think that's another reason why it would be important to chat with the commissioners.
Right, but I just didn't, was thinking if people are listening to this tomorrow or later in the weekend or something, we don't want to, sidewalks are not off the table. They're just.
Exactly.
Dependent on something else is going on.
Right, yeah. Okay. So, Kim, you'll issue an RFP. Okay.
Hi.
Oh, Joe?
Okay. Bebe, I haven't had a chance to welcome you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. So, big-picture items, I'm only here because of you talking about priorities this year, and there's always a lot in front of you. So, fire, police is, sounds like it'll stay on the forefront. It's good. I hope we can come to a consensus on how we approach that. New site, expand the site, wherever you go with that, I'm glad it's going to stay on the forefront. I think, and maybe for Bebe's benefit, I think it's also time to dust off some reports that have been kicking around and things, as we look at and get, I won't say distracted, but as we get focused on other things, there's certain things that continue to fall through the cracks. And for me, it's a concern, being concerned about our employees, things that benefit them, safety, et cetera. So, there's a report that's kicking around from the former Building and Facilities Committee that was presented. I haven't brushed up on it, but a few items come to mind that seem like they're really simple. I mean, we spent some time with Bob Harrington at the town sheds, what needs to happen down there. You know, I look at some of the winter weather we faced this year, and those guys out plowing all night. No showers down there for our guys. It's something that's pretty, pretty simple. I don't think it's going to take a lot to renovate, do some things that Bob's been wanting to have down there. I think that was addressed in a, in a report we gave, so that's one area. I talk to the guys at the transfer station all the time. The restroom facilities, there's talk about what needs to be changed to move around there, reorganize that. It seems like some of these projects have gotten stuck in the mud, never got out of the mud. I'm not sure how we get them started again. There's no longer a committee that's going to push forth an effort to bring those back on the table. So, I don't know if it's going to have to start with the selectmen again. And then getting right back to the Academy Building, I know Will has had requests and needs for certain renovations that can be done down there, for layouts, for safety purposes, for facilitating people that coming, come in and out of that office. So, just really wanted to put my two cents in that we need to find a way to get those types of low-hanging fruit. They're not, they're not expensive. It shouldn't take a lot to get those back in front of conversations that we can see those not just move from ideas but to action items. That's it. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Oh, Colin, sorry.
Thank you, Colin Beasley. So, when we were, I know you're no longer part of the Budget Committee as a select board rep, but when we were there, we talked a lot about initiatives that the select board may take on because they're policy-related. I like to call them budget structural issues. So, we talked about reserves policy. We talked about computer and software investments, and that was on your list of things that needed to be done. We talked about dispatch fees. We talked about facility maintenance programs, sidewalk planning. Frankly, in my view, there's a need to do some benchmarking of our budget against other towns and communities. I think there's a need to take a look at how we do surplus management, asset lives before we replace them, insurance policies. All these things are growing at leaps and bounds. And one of the things that we chatted about is, how does, how does the select board get their arms around these things? How does the select board get the time to really do a deep dive on these budget issues? My, my suggestion would be the Select Board Finder Committee, or an advisory group of experts on budgets and on town management, and be given the opportunity to share with the select board some of their findings. And that would help you accelerate some of the other conversations you have to have, because that group of people with expertise on budgets can be doing that analysis. The other area that I think is important is record digitization and storage. I know that that's been in the budget for a year or so. It was delayed. I don't know if, I believe it's still in budget. Kim, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a capital reserve account for that.
Yeah. So, that's a whole nother area that's been pending, and I know that there's a lot of issues that got in the way over the last couple of years of doing it. So, I think that's an area that the select board, again, could get a committee to go, whether it's, I know there's a desire not to recreate the BFC, but something with people with facilities capabilities that can facilitate, again, on the side. You've heard me say it before, and I'll say it again. I think that delegation is a way for you to accomplish a lot of things at the same time. And if you try to do it all yourself, we're going to be here next year with a very similar list, because you only meet twice a month. All right, so, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Colin.
Colin, I would, I would note, I hope you heard me say that capital reserves and the dispatch fees and the financial software, all things are on short-term lists, so.
Oh, I heard, I didn't hear you say the software.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I heard the other ones, yeah.
Sorry, okay. Those are all, all on the short-term list. They're easy things to deal with, and we will deal with them.
I think they're going to take time, Bill. I think, they might be easy, but it takes time, and you guys meet an hour and a half a night. I would argue that some of these things are going to require an hour or so a week for people who can really help you understand the implications of those things.
Well, I think we'll, you know, when the Budget Committee gets itself organized in May, hopefully, Bebe, you will let me talk, chat with you a bit about what I tried to commit to for us, and once you all get organized in May, we'll see what we can do. But I, I have a different view than Colin about how much time it will take.
And, and just, and we always have, no, we don't always have a different, but yes, on this, on this matter, we do have a different view. Please correct me if I'm wrong. The Budget Committee has so far not been inclined to get involved in issues that are perceived to be select board policy issues for the budget. So.
I think that's why we agreed during the budget process to have the selectmen at least.
Yes.
Deal with the capital reserves, the software issue, and the dispatch fees. Those are the three that kept coming up. But again, I think, in fairness to the rest of the Budget Committee, you know, as soon as it gets organized in May, that'll be the right place to determine what its priorities are and so on. So, and we're fortunate to have, Bebe have six years of exposure to budget issues at the, at the school board too, and how they've done, done things. So.
It's fine.
We're all on due course, but we can't, you know, the selectmen, at least for our priorities, you know, the first thing we're going to do is, is deal with the three things that we committed to do during the budget process.
I'm just offering my opinion, as part of the open discussion.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
In fact, Bebe has, is reaching out to members of the school, the SAU, that with regard to computer programs and that sort of thing, and so she'll have some good information.
I've already shared it with Lynn.
Good.
Yep.
Great. All right. Thanks, Bebe. Okay, Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, I've handed you out draft rules of procedure that.
Okay, I've handed you out draft rules of procedure that if you could look over and be ready to either approve or talk more about on, at the next meeting. There's an Easter extravagant, now, how do you say that? Eggs extravaganza? Saturday, nine to 11, right over here. We had the first pre-construction meeting for the Whipple Hall Improvement and Renovations. Phil, did you want to add anything? I thought it was a very good meeting. Okay. Well, you can take my word for it, that it's all very well organized. We got Rip and Phil there, so I think we're looking forward to starting on May 1st, so we're all set with that. Will is going to help. We're going to get all of this AV stuff, has to be stored, the monitors have to be taken down, so we have a little bit of work to do, but we're all confident that we're going to be able to go on May 1st. There was also a big fire at Hilltop. Chief, did you want to comment, say anything about that for anybody? Selectmen want an update on that? It was the biggest event we've had in some time, so appreciate you commenting.
Yeah, so, everyone was aware of the training burn that was at 776 Main Street. We involved multiple mutual aid companies that came up for first alarm assignments, so the town New London set up in four zones to better utilize our, our resources. Doesn't make sense for Sunapee to drive past our station to go to a call on Siemens Road and then have Sutton covering our station. So by setting it up in zones, we're able to, to better utilize those, those pieces of apparatus. So we had that on the 25th. On April 1st, we were down in Wilmette at 6:00 AM for their training burn. They had a very similar live burn scenario, where firefighters from multiple towns got together, were able to go in. We did things like, obviously, fire suppression and backup lines to victim removal, building search, ladders, so water supply, all these, all these facets that are so, so important. Over the last 30 years or so, the number of structure fires fortunately have diminished because of better public education, building codes being implemented, certainly fuel types in the early 80s, late, late 70s, early 80s. The New London Fire Department used to go to 20, 30 chimney fires a year. We also used to respond to 18 building fires just in the town New London. So now, most of our building fire response is outside of town. However, on April 1st, at almost midnight, came in at 11:50, was a reported building fire on, at Hilltop Place. It came into our dispatch center. The units calling in was 133, which brought back memories from 20 years ago when we had a fire at 132, so we knew exactly where the water supplies were. And very quickly, fortunately, we have officers on duty 24 hours a day, because we had a couple of officers responding to that call that were able to give us a scene size up relatively quickly. Actually, it was the police, one of the police officers that said, "You might want to kick this up to a second alarm," which brings in two additional engines, two tankers, and brought in an additional ladder because of the occupancy of Hilltop. One of the concerns that we have is, when you have a housing development like that with multiple units and people from sometimes non-ambulatory or mobility issues, getting out in a safe and timely manner is super, super concerning for us. The last fire that we had, two people were rescued out of the burning building. So it eventually went to a third, almost fourth alarm assignment, and right now, we're working with the cause and origin and trying to figure out what transpired, so hopefully that will be moving forth. But we're just really, really grateful for all the mutual aid companies that were able to assist, and also the trainings that we had prior to make our jobs easier. So obviously, there's a cost that's incurred when we're doing various trainings as far as the personnel. It really came to fruition. We had firefighters going in to the main fire building, doing a then enter search, which means they pop through a window, they close the door to that room, and they search the building that's actually on fire. The police officers were able to clear the building prior to us arriving, the adjacent unit 126. So all companies, police, fire, EMS, all worked really, really well. Knock on wood, there were, there was one firefighter that was injured from another town in the process of, of doing a secondary search to clear the, the adjacent dwelling, but we're lucky that these were unoccupied buildings, so. Very, very concerning when it, when it comes to fire at that time of night in a situation like that.
So Jay, someone mentioned to me that the fire hydrants aren't, there aren't that many fire hydrants at Hilltop. Is that...
So ironically, one, the fire at 132, we had a fire hydrant right in front of us and right in back of us, so when it was called into that unit, the firefighters, never mind the fact that we had done this 20 years ago for, for practice. Unfortunately, where that's located, if that development had taken place today, we'd want fire hydrants at least 500 feet away. The closest fire hydrant that we had, that was visible to the folks, because they pulled up all the firefight, all the fire departments, similar to Chief Cobb's new software, were able to share data with each other, so they can pull up a map and see where the closest fire hydrant is. And by the time they got into the scene, they had to lay a line in, so they laid right around 1,000 feet of hose, the Wilmette Company did, to supply water to our ladder truck, and because of the wind and the volume of fire on the, at 125 Hilltop Place, the other line was laid by the Sunapee Fire Department to the next hydrant, and that was 1,200 feet. So, in hindsight, like anytime we do something, it's not, okay, great job, high five, we look at stuff, we critique, and we say, okay, what can we do better? What should we have done? And certainly, personnel putting hoses over their backs and dragging it through yards, we probably could have gotten right around 400 feet away if we'd gone through the yard, but the problem was all the, the fire debris and embers were blowing right at the, at the firefighters. But we certainly look at stuff and say, okay, in the future, what can we do differently? But the hydrants weren't, that unit in particular was probably the worst unit in Hilltop Place. Other units are easier to get to.
I understood that it wasn't 133 that was on fire, that it...
125.
Okay, 125.
Unit 125 was the original building of origin.
Yeah.
133, it had been called in, so in translation from the dispatcher, someone calls in at midnight, and, and, you know, whatever the, the mix-up was, so...
And, and there's no idea as to what started?
Still, still under investigation. Yep. So, the last, I can tell you the last time that we had a fire there, it was from a gas leak, so propane leak, under snow conditions, had settled, and the line had cracked, and because the snow was piled up, we had a heavy snow year that year, and so the gas couldn't escape, propane's heavier than air, but it pushed into the dwelling, so when the furnace kicked on, it ignited that pocket of gas on the exterior of the building, and so it was a propane-fed fire. It went up the outside of the T-111 into the soffit, so we were able to rescue the occupants inside, but the entire attic space was fully involved. One of the things that that was a catalyst for was smoke detectors. And, like, I love the news media, but, you know, they said, "Well, Chief Lyons said that everyone to check their smoke detector." What I actually said was, this year, there have been more fire fatalities in the state of New Hampshire than accumulatively in 2002, already in the last three months. It is so, so important in any of these cases where there are fire fatalities, usually there's no working smoke detectors, or the smoke detectors aren't working, and certainly carbon monoxide detectors are, we advocate as well. So the last fire that we had, Gordon McKinnon, who worked for the National Fire Protective Association, he was one of the people that spearheaded this, they went through and they added smoke detectors to those units that didn't have interconnected smoke detectors. So in this case, hopefully, or, you know, heaven forbid there's a fire, hopefully those units have interconnected working smoke detectors. So if there's a fire in the garage, or in the attic space, or whatever the case is, the occupants are notified. In the past, people used to have eight to 10 minutes to get out of a building, now it's only two to three minutes, because of all those synthetic materials and the toxic gases that are formed. They're all polymers and elastomers, burn two to three times hotter, and more importantly, create 500 times more smoke. So we were certainly, certainly lucky that these units weren't occupied, knock on wood, and, and hopefully, we will find out what, what transpired. But anytime you have significant, you know, damage like that, it takes a bit.
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah. It was the crew. I just, I was the one with no voice on the radio, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Okay. Is there anything else? Kim? Okay. Bill, do you have any reports?
No, thank you.
Okay. The Planning Board met last Tuesday and reviewed the final site plan for Twin Pines Housing Trust to construct four buildings of 60 units each, with a mix of one and two-bedroom units. The proposal includes associated site improvements for parking, pedestrian access, landscaping, lighting, and storm water management. A well will provide water to the units, but fire suppression will be provided by the New London Water Precinct. There are a number of conditions, and the plan was approved. Also approved was a lot line adjustment on the property. I'd like to read a letter from the attorney for Twin Pines to Adam. He says, "Thank you all for your help. I've been doing affordable housing over 25 years, and this was the best experience I've ever had working with the town. The one word that I can think of that describes the process is professional. You, the other town employees, and the board all behaved and acted in a professional manner, adhering to your ordinances and regulations, but treating the applicant fairly and offering advice on how to move the project through all of the town's planning stages. You wouldn't believe how haphazard some municipalities treat applicants. I know I may be biased, but seeing you, seeing how you and the board handled an application makes me proud to be a resident of New London." And that was from Kenneth Fiscarello, and I, I think it's really nice when one of our boards receives a letter like that. So anyway, that's there. Many meeting minutes, but, we don't have the many minutes of March 30th, okay? Our next regular selectments meeting is Thursday, April 27th. Is there anything else? Any other business?
I had, I had something.
Okay.
So I was contacted by Kristin Schultz, who just was elected to the Newbury Select Board, asking if I might be interested in being involved with a tri-town watershed group. I had coffee with her and a gentleman named Jack Cutner the other day. Jack Cutner is a Newbury resident, and he started a group two years ago called Save the Lake Sunapee Watershed. So this is a separate group that he started, separate from LSPA, but he's, he volunteers for LSPA as well. I met with them and talked about, I know nothing, I had to look up what a watershed was, I don't, I know nothing about this stuff, but I obviously have lake protection in my blood, right? So I, I listened to what they, they, they said, and they'd like to, they've talked to a selectman in Sunapee who's interested in being, so they want a selectman from each of the three towns, and to join this group, where they're going to talk about how the towns can work together to protect the watershed, not only for Big Lake Sunapee, but for all of our bodies of water, or watershed in all three towns. Just sharing policies and, you know, sharing what we're doing with regards to ordinances and things like that. So I'm, I'm fine doing that if you two are okay with it, and then I can share, you know, what we talk about during the meetings at our Select Board meetings.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Great.
All right. Okay, good. Thanks, Bebe.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other business, we have some things to sign, and then we can...
All righty.
Move on.
Fabulous.